Good evening. Welcome to the February 24th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on Foxborough Cable Access.
Could everyone please stop talking? Thank you.
Okay, do we have any old or new business to address this year?
No.
Okay, action items?
So we have a request to release a performance guarantee that's being held for 105 Washington Street. This was when they did the expansion of the parking lot behind the motel. The project was completed in 2019, and it's sort of something that fell through the cracks, and the owner came back and said, "I don't think I've ever asked for the money back." So he is. So everything has been submitted, everything is complete, so I would suggest that the board vote to release all funds being held for 105 Washington Street.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I make a motion to release all the funds being held for the performance guarantee for 105 Washington Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Oops, excuse me.
And what is the amount?
I...
All funds.
You caught me on three paires, sorry.
I didn't mean to.
It's...I don't have an amount exact because of interests, so we just have to...actually, the vote has to be all funds.
All funds.
Yeah. So we need to do a roll call.
Okay, Jeff, you would be the...
Yep, Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin?
He's on mute.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Can't hear you.
Kevin, aye.
Okay. Gabby, anything else?
Seven Perry Drive, we're supposed to have the Mylars, but Bill Buckley forgot to bring them to us before he went on vacation, so that'll be to the next meeting.
Okay.
I do have the two sets of minutes, you guys. I had sent out the January 17th one at the last meeting, and Jeff sent me one changed, and I sent out February 8th today. It was pretty short.
Are you good, Jeff?
Yes, I'd just make a motion, we accept the minutes for January 17th as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Didn't have the February 8th.
I have not reviewed those.
Okay, we can save those.
Has anyone else reviewed?
I have.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from February 8th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Jeff abstained.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Okay. We have about six or seven minutes before the public hearing at 7:10 can begin. Is there anything that we need to be discussing?
I can give you an update on the hiring of a Director of Land Use and Economic Development.
Great.
We have a search open for one right now, and we are interviewing a couple candidates, pre-screening a couple candidates on Monday, but the plan is to follow, as in past practice, to have the select...I mean, the planning board kind of handle that, so I'm going to meet with them, with HR, just to see, and then if we think that they're worthy of this board's time, then we'll follow that process where...and I know in the past, I was put through the wringer. I mean, I was...I think, what did I have? I had like a phone interview, and then an interview with the library, and then an interview at the senior center, plus a writing sample, so...
We still hired you.
Yeah, I still came, so I will...yeah, but I just wanted to kind of get that ball rolling and sort of see if the people are good to go. We haven't had a ton of interest, unfortunately, so applications are trickling in, so hopefully...
There's big shoes to fill, so...
True, true. So that's the current plan. We're still all working on Gabby, trying to take over. I don't know why.
I don't think that's working.
It's not working enough.
She's got the head going this way.
I can give the board an update. We have applications that are coming in. We have a subdivision application that was just filed, and there is a multifamily on Main Street that is in the process of being filed.
If you...talking is fine, but you need to leave the room because we have trouble hearing, and it has trouble coming out on the live feed. Thank you.
So we have a multifamily project that is also upcoming, so we're starting to get busy.
Good.
So things are picking up again.
That's good to hear. Has there been any...oh, actually, we're going to discuss it, so...
We also are going to be doing...we got a grant for $250,000 for ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan, so that's going to be...and we got the grant like three weeks ago, and it has to be completed by June 30th. I know this morning there was a bid opening for that, so that will be interesting. That's looking at all town facilities, not including schools, but all town facilities, but it's also looking at, for example, our website and other things to make sure that we are, you know, providing accessibility for all residents and all people. So this will be an interesting...it's a require...a mandate to do it, so it's...we're fortunate that we were able to get it done with the state paying for it, as opposed to Foxborough paying for it, so stay tuned for that.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but any update on the Lutheran Church?
Yes. I mean, yes and no. We...the Select Board walked the church today, and in the meantime, I know Chris, I saw you out there with your guys looking through, so there were a lot of inspections going on. So I have no...nothing to report, except that the Select Board will be meeting in executive session at 6:30 on Tuesday night to discuss strategy and make a decision as to whether to proceed with making an offer. Offers are due March 1st, so...but yeah, we did...we did get four out of five Select Board members there today, and one had already seen. So yeah, it's still looking promising. I mean, subject to the technical, you know, the guys were out there looking at all the systems and answering some various questions. Chris, did you...is there anything of interest?
I'm not sure how much you want me to say.
Probably nothing.
That's probably fair game for executive section next Tuesday.
Yeah, it is, so...yeah, so...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, on Tuesday, I did attend the meeting for the Walnut Street Senior Housing Project. Surprisingly, there was only three families present out of all of the abutters. The developer put forward a very good presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing that project kick off in a few months.
What was the purpose of the meeting?
Just to have a meet and greet with the neighbors. The abutters let them know what was going on. They addressed pre-construction inspection of the abutting properties, interior, exterior, to make sure that if there are any claims to be made, that they're substantiated and everything's documented prior. Gave us a quick overview on how they plan on proceeding, what their timelines are, so...
What was the reaction of the families that attended?
It was very positive. Everybody seems to be good with it at this point, because it's going to be a very good thing for the community. We're going to get over 100 housing units for seniors. Foxborough gets preferential treatment in the first round of occupancy, and we're getting a traffic light.
So with respect to the traffic light, the signal and sewer work has gone out to bid, and I believe those bids are due back the 29th, and so we will be choosing a contractor for that work and proceeding with that.
Excellent. And can you con...I know it's not our town, but can you confirm that it's Costco going in across from Shaw's in Sharon?
Well, we can't confirm that, but there is an article on town meeting that is somewhat related to that with respect to the sewer going to Sharon.
Excellent.
Yes. I don't know for what. I don't know if it's tied to one user, but I know there is an extension, you know, a desire to have the agreement run 99 years rather than the 25, and it requires a town meeting vote to go over 25.
A Sharon town meeting vote?
Foxborough. It's on the Foxborough Town Meeting Ward.
Both towns have to vote it. So Sharon voted at their special town meeting back in December, and we have it on for May.
Gotcha. Oh, thank you.
And just bringing that back to town meeting, town meeting is May 13th this year. It's always the second Monday in May, and we have 31 articles, so it is a...and it's not just housekeeping, there's a lot of...lot going on. So for the residents here, it's a good meeting to go to, to...it's kind of where the things are decided for the town, so there's a lot of...you'll see a lot of it on tonight's agenda, you know, with the public hearings regarding zoning, but there are a lot of other initiatives going on at town meetings, so...
Great. I think you're good.
Okay. It being just after 7:10 PM, I'd like to open the public hearing, special permit site plan, 70 Elm Street, DPW Garage Expansion. Mr. Gallagher?
Sorry. Sorry. Good evening. Just by way of quick introduction, I'm Chris Gallagher, I'm the Director of Public Works. Lance Del Peori is the Assistant Director and Town Engineer, and from Weston and Sampson we have Elena Comter and JP Parnas. So we're here tonight to seek site plan approval for a proposed expansion to the DPW garage. The primary function of the addition is to provide an interior vehicle wash bay that'll meet the stormwater standards, and then also provide new expanded space for our Vehicle Maintenance Division in the DPW. So for our Vehicle Maintenance Division, we take care of all town vehicles with the exception of fire apparatus, so that includes 30 school buses, 35 police cars, all the DPW equipment and vehicles, the couple of sedans that the town hall uses, as well as the senior center as well. So we've outgrown the existing garage, so we have a plan to present. You know, the project itself also includes site improvements, which include a new fueling station for the town, so the fuel station, gas and diesel pumps for the town are housed at the DPW. There are no other municipal fueling stations in town, so we're going to take those fuelings, the tanks, out from underground. They'll be above-ground tanks, and there'll be a brand-new system over there. We'll also have improved site drainage, as well as a small relocation of the bus parking lot. So kind of with that quick overview, I'm going to turn it over to Elena and JP to go through some of the details, and then open up to discussion or any questions.
Okay. Chris, you basically covered a lot of it. Can I share my screen here, then?
Sure.
Great. So yeah, I'll just run through this fairly briefly. Appreciate your time meeting us tonight. Again, I'm sure you're all familiar with 70 Elm Street, the existing...
Are you able to somehow make that bigger?
Yes. The existing DPW Public Works Department site, as well as the main parking lot for the school buses. Across the street is the electric substation and a large solar array. The existing site is in a...is it light industrial? On the north side, it does abut a residential area, residential zoned area. On the south side, there's a railroad right-of-way, and then additional, I think, light industrial. On the east side is Route 195, and then on the west, as noted there before, is the fields and the solar array. So the existing building, maybe you've seen it, it's from 1970s, Masonry block building. There's an existing storage shed as well, and an existing administration building and a salt shed. And currently, the buses, the school buses park fairly close to the existing building. Briefly, the proposed work is to add, as Chris mentioned, five maintenance bays off this southern end of the...northern end, excuse me, of the existing building, including a vehicle wash bay at this end here. The existing fuel tanks underground are approximately here, those are going to be removed. We have an LSP involved with this to manage that removal, to make sure that any contamination, potential contamination is remediated. New above-ground, double-wall tanks and a canopy are proposed adjacent to the building here. We've put it at the front of the site in order to allow better access by all town vehicles. Every town vehicle uses this, will use this facility. The rest of the site, structures are being untouched, but we are re-grading and repaving the entire site, including adding new parking, expanded parking for staff and public at the front of the site. In order to achieve this addition, we have to push the bus parking a bit over, so we are taking a little bit out of this existing hill and this wooded area. There's still quite a good buffer between this and the residential area left, and that is able to redesign and relocate the school bus parking a bit further away. Also, we're able to add security fencing around that school bus parking, as we understand there's been some issues there. Sort of the amount of detail I have planned to do. Elena, do you want to add anything, or go over then some of the waivers?
If you can go to the landscape plan, I think it might be a good plan to show while I'm talking about it. So we will be asking a relief from a couple requirements as a design waiver, so really focused on some landscaping and driveway spacing. So one of the items that we're asking planning board relief from is the spacing of the driveways. Because of the long frontage, based on zoning regulations, there has to be 166 feet between driveways, but because this is going to be used not only by the DPW, but also a second use as a bus parking facility, we need to have multiple driveways to accommodate all of those, so the spacing between the driveways does not meet that requirement, but also neither does the existing facility, so the spacing is going to be approximately the same as under the existing facility.
And what is that?
It is 28.5. I think the existing is 29.5 is the closest distance between driveways, and the proposed is 28.5, so there is one foot difference.
And will those curb cuts be substantially in the same locations as present?
They are going to be a little bit different, partially really to accommodate the access to the fuel island, so that the buses, we did do a turning template to make sure that all of the vehicles that will be using the fuel island can get in and out, so that's really kind of what triggered the position of the curb cuts.
And as mentioned, the bus parking is getting shifted down a bit as well, so those entrances are shifted with it.
Yeah, so right now, that the bus parking lot doesn't have dedicated entrances and exits. This will give them that.
Conflict.
So that'll reduce the conflicts coming through, it'll define those curb cuts a little bit better. As you drive by now, the one closer to the bus lot is pretty extensive, so this will really define those entrances and exits.
Yeah, the intent here is to keep the school bus parking and staff parking separate from the DPW operations as much as possible.
Sure, sure. So just for purposes of clarification, obviously, this is non-compliant to begin with, so will this new configuration, slight variation, require a waiver for that?
I don't think so. So the second item, I guess the waiver that we're...well, I'm not sure if waiver is the correct...correct word to use, but relief that we're asking for is parking buffer along lot lines. So right now, there is a requirement to have a 15-foot landscape buffer along the frontage. We are complying with that in certain portions of the site, specifically in front of the administration building on the right, and in front of the bus parking facility, but the landscape area in front of the main existing DPW facility is about five feet, which is also a large improvement over what's there now. If you guys are familiar with the site, it's really paving up to the street line, basically, so we'll have a little bit of improvement, but it's not in full compliance with the requirements. And I believe the last one is that the requirement is that in the landscape buffer, we should have shrubs and trees. The one landscape buffer at the rear of the site will be landscaped, it's complying in size as far as 15-foot minimum, but it would not have any trees, because we are using it for some stormwater management, it's going to have a stormwater swell, so really having shrubs or trees there would kind of prevent from maintenance of that swell. And there is a lot of wooded area behind the rear lot line adjacent to I-95, so it really shouldn't hinder any screening. So I believe this is the three main relief items that is up to your discretion, and if there is any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do have one question. The new fueling station, is that going to be easily accessible for the buses? Because...
Well, yes.
From what I'm seeing, there's really no traffic pattern there.
So let me pull this up. So we did carefully do some what are called turning templates, which means we take a bus-sized vehicle...
Right.
And run these AutoCAD, automatic turning, so yes, we've tested a number of different scenarios. Buses could come in on both sides, come in and out of this area quite easily.
And typically, what we use is the fire department ladder truck.
Right.
That's typically the...actually, what we'll generally do for the turning templates in town is we'll use Mansfield's tower truck, because that's got a longer wheelbase. We did run those turning templates, using those, and those did fit as well.
Okay, great.
Because we met with the permanent building committee, and Don Trionne Jr. is on, the third is on, the permanent building committee, and he gave us those templates for the temporary ladder truck that they have, which is bigger than anything out there.
So is the...specific to the school buses, is the idea that generally speaking, apart perhaps from fueling, that they would access the site specifically in that fenced area?
That's the intent, yes.
Right. And so when they fuel, they would go back out to Elm Street and then come back in?
That's correct, yes. There is...there is, you know, access behind here, and that'll be used...
I see that, yeah.
Occasionally, because they were relocating the...there's a snow brush system that we're locating back here, so I could imagine at some point, they might be running around that direction, but generally, they're in and out only...
So they will have gated fence, two on Elm Street and one in the back?
Correct.
Okay.
The one on the back will likely be open, but it all depends on what we do with the main entrances into the site itself.
Chris, any new lighting?
There will be lighting in the...new lighting in the bus parking area. We'll have to have power out there, block heaters for the diesel buses that we have left, so we have about 10 diesel buses left. By the time this comes around, hopefully, we're down to six or seven, which will reduce the amount out there, but there will be new lighting out on that site itself. And I think we have some can lights, floodlights on the building itself.
Yeah, correct.
And the only increase in any structural footprint is just the maintenance section?
Yes.
That's correct, yeah.
How much...how much of the buffer on the right was...did it strengthen by?
What's the grade difference?
It's about six feet. Is that correct?
You're talking width-wise, how much closer to the neighbor do we get?
Vertically, you're...you're asking about elevation.
I would...yeah.
Yeah, vertically, I think it's about six feet of soil that we're taking out, is that correct?
I think horizontally, we're moved about 30 to 40 feet closer to the abutter.
So what is still between the edge and the abutter?
I think you still have over 200 feet buffer.
Okay, thank you.
It's a pretty dense pine grove through there.
Yeah.
It's good.
And just one last, you know, thing while we're on it. We do have a special permit application going into ZBA for their March 21st meeting. Just...there are three items. There's a canopy over the fuel island that extends into the setback for the front yard. The number of parking spaces, we're asking for a waiver on the number of parking spaces based on use, and then the impervious area. We're reducing the impervious area, but we're not going to get below the 70% requirement, so we do have that ZBA meeting next month.
Do you want us to...are we to continue?
Do we have any questions from the public as far as this project, proposed project?
And just for clarification, this will be going to town meeting and to ballot for funding, so it is something that will be coming up this spring, so it's good that you're all here to hear about it, to get the inside track on what's actually happening out there.
We have the stormwater study is being peer-reviewed right now, so I would request that we go off on the voting until the...
Yep.
Our next meeting. But everything...so that way, the plans are final when you guys vote on it, so...
And that will be March 14th?
March 14th, yes. High day.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit site plan at 70 Elm Street for the DPW Garage Expansion, Foxborough Department of Public Works.
Second.
May...March 14th.
To March 14th.
Do we have a time?
This one's not happening, right? So...you want 7:45? Oh, no, that's an informal, 7:30?
No, 7...7...I'm sorry. Let's do 7:10.
7:10?
Okay. So March 14th at 7:10 PM.
There's a second on that, right?
I did, yes.
Yep.
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, 3:00 a.m. Yeah, well, they're doing...we have to do one continuance for Wall Street, and then...
The next item is the project on Wall Street, 3032. They have revised plans, we are trying to get input from the staff. So I spoke with the engineer...the attorney today, and we've agreed that they're going to be requesting a...that they're requesting a continuance to the March 28th meeting.
Is that third continuance?
Yes, yeah.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing...
I can go ahead.
For the special permit site plan at 3032 Wall Street till March 28th at...
7:15?
7:15.
At 7:15 PM.
Second. Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Okay. It being a little past 7:20 PM, public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 9.6.1.1 Chestnut, Pace and Overlay District, as well as section 9.6.6, table 9-1, section...in section 9.6.7.12, point C, changes to the...yeah, changes to insert new language, increasing the number of units per acre allowed in an assisted living facility. Do you want to start and explain what's going on in general?
Sure. So as you know, we're working on completing the state hospital campus. The old auditorium is at a point where we either need to tear it down or seek redevelopment of it. The estimate to tear it down would be about at least a half a million dollars. We've been looking at disposing of that property, putting it up for sale. We've been looking at disposing of that property, putting it up for sale, with the condition that it could be for up to 10 condominium units, not apartments, it'd be condominium units. And with, where even, since the town would be putting out the RFP for it, we can stipulate, we would also be indicating that it would be right of first refusal for Foxborough residents. So that's what, the way we can, many people want to save the auditorium. That's the only way it's going to be saved. The town doesn't have the means. We've tried to put a community center there. We've tried to look at it for multiple uses. The roof is about to fail, and we're about to lose the building. So that's, as you know, you've all heard this before, but that's the strategy there. Then also, one of the other portions of the campus that was never done is around assisted living. And there's no assisted living, assisted living here in Foxborough, and many residents have asked for that. And that was the vision of the original state hospital project. It was included in the reuse plan. So we are contemplating changing the zoning to allow a single assisted living facility up there, in addition to the reuse of the auditorium. So Barney has gone ahead and drafted up some zoning amendments that would allow that vision. And again, there are multiple steps that would have to happen for this to happen. We have to go to town meeting, we have to change the zoning, we have to vote to have the select board dispose, we have to vote to have the select board work, petition for general legislation to change the use restrictions on the property. We would need the legislature to change the use restrictions on the property, and we need to work with DCAM. So far, DCAM has been extremely helpful and interested in working with us, so we feel good about it, but it will be a lengthy process. But there does stand to be some significant tax revenue from it, and in addition, it would save a building, and it would complete the state hospital campus entirely.
So Barnett Overett, 10 Ames Road, Chair of the Board of Appeals. As Paige has indicated, the purpose of the amendment is to facilitate renovation of the existing auditorium on the old Foxborough State Hospital grounds for use as 10 condominium units, and those will be market rate condominium units, and the development of an 84-unit assisted living facility. So all the changes that are here, and one of them has to be revised, all the changes that are here are to facilitate that from a zoning standpoint. The one change that needs to be revised is with respect to section 9.6.7.12. C. Right now, that reads assisted living facilities, 40 dwelling units per acre. 40 needs to be reduced to 32. The reason being, earlier this week, I was advised by Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group that the conceptual plan that we're utilizing was incorrect, that the property is actually a little bit bigger than the one we were working on before. So 2.65 acres times 32 units is roughly 84 assisted living facility units. So we would need an amendment to that one specific section in the proposal.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board?
You've all seen this a couple of times.
Yes.
All right.
Not from me.
Not from you. But it is a public hearing. Yes. Do we have any questions on this article from the floor? None heard? Tracy, you may.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the warrant article with Foxborough zoning bylaw, the Chestnut Pace and Overlay District, with the revisions, with it amended per Barney's explanation.
Second.
All in favor? Jeff, aye. Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Would you vote to, either to make a positive recommendation on this article to town meeting? And for what reasons?
Do you need that tonight?
Yes. I'll make a motion to support the warrant article related to the Foxborough zoning bylaw that addresses the Chestnut Pace and Overlay District. And I think Paige did a good job sharing the reasons why we've, you know, there's never, there isn't an assisted living facility in Foxborough, and it's something that, you know, the residents have asked for many times, I believe. And it will finish out the completion of the state hospital project.
And save the auditorium?
And save the auditorium building.
And I would add on that, specific to the auditorium, that the town had taken possession of that for the specific purpose of trying to salvage it years ago, so...
You're very right.
Second up. Okay. All in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
A point of information, do you need a motion to close the public hearing on each of the articles?
Yeah, she did that.
We did that.
We did, we already did.
Barney's keeping us on his toes. Someone has to.
Being a little after 7:25 PM, public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 3.1.6, table 3-1, section 1.7, and 1.8, and section...
L.7.
L.7 and L.8.
Oh, sorry.
He needs his glasses.
Ah, new contacts. And section 11.1.
Yes.
Definition as they relate to accessory uses and structures. Mr. Overett?
Thank you. Barnett Overett again, 10 Ames Road, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the purpose of this amendment is to correct some existing inconsistencies in the zoning bylaw. And if you'll continue to indulge me, I'll be back with more next year. I've already got my list started. So use group L, L.3 in the table of uses provides that the gross area of residential storage structures cannot exceed 400 square feet. However, the definition of the term residential storage structure in section 11.1 provides that the gross area cannot exceed 200 square feet. So there's an obviously inconsistency between definition and table of uses. The table of uses is correct. And by revising the definition to change 200 feet to 400 square feet, we're not only bringing these two provisions into consistency, but we're also bringing them into conformity with how the building department has handled the matter for a number of years. Now, in addition, use group L.7 allows by right accessory uses to multifamily dwellings in the R-40, highway business, general business, limited industrial, and S-1 districts, although multifamily dwellings are not permitted in any of those districts. And use group L.8 allows by means of a special permit from the Board of Appeals, accessory structures to multifamily structures in the highway business, general industrial, limited industrial, and S-1 districts, though again, multifamily structures are not allowed in those districts. So this would be to correct that inconsistency, or sort of that contradiction.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions?
From the board? No.
From the board? No.
Gary?
No. I would just point out, it probably bears saying, we should have said this at the beginning, for those people who aren't really familiar with a lot of this stuff, these types of corrections come up on a regular, if not annual, basis when you're dealing with a document as complicated and arcane as the zoning bylaws. So these types of housekeeping matters are pretty routine, and the board has already reviewed these over the past month, so...
Months.
Months.
I do think Barney, like, just spends his evenings reading the zoning bylaws.
Pretty much.
Well, I'm not the only one. I was sitting in a zoning board meeting one night, and I get a text from somebody about changes that needed to be made to the table of uses, so I won't say whom, but...
Do we have any questions from the floor? None being heard?
Make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the warrant article, the zoning bylaw, amending section 3.1.6 definitions as they relate to accessory uses and structures.
Second. All in favor? Jeff, aye. Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Make a motion to support this warrant article at the town meeting for the reasons outlined by Mr. Overett, that there's inconsistencies between use, the table of uses and definitions, as well as some quantitative information. So it's basically a cleanup to make it consistent throughout the bylaw.
Close. Second. All those in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay.
Thanks.
Being a little after 7:30 PM, public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 3.1.6, table 3-1, table of uses by deleting the definition of institutional uses, and use group F.1, and replacing it with a new definition of that term. Mr. Overett?
So institutional uses are an allowed use in several zoning districts by means of a special permit, and that's in accordance with the table of uses. The term currently is defined as all land and buildings for housing people suffering from physical limitations, including among others hospitals, sanitariums, infirmaries, orphanages, and institutions licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So the definition can be, and has been read, to require a special permit for use of a single-family dwelling that serves as the residence of up to five disabled individuals. And this is contrary to how the matter is treated in the state building code. And in addition, because a special permit is not required for use of a single-family dwelling as the residence of up to five unrelated individuals who are not disabled, our definition and its special permit requirement likely violates the Federal Fair Housing Act and a provision in the Massachusetts zoning act. The proposed definition adds clarity to the concept of an institutional use and indicates that it is applicable only to those single-family dwellings that serve as the residence of more than five unrelated individuals with disabilities. Town council has reviewed and approved this proposed new definition.
No questions.
Any questions from the board?
None.
Any questions from the floor?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is anybody in the audience?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, making notes.
Barney needs some haircuts here. Make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 3.1.6.
Second. All those in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Gabby, I'm gonna need help on this one. Make a motion to support the warrant article related to Foxborough zoning bylaw, where we are deleting and replacing the definition of institutional uses in use group F dot 1, F dot 1 dot. And the reason for supporting it is due to it bringing us in compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act.
And adds clarity.
And adds clarity.
To the definition.
To the definition.
Second. All those in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye. Being just after 7:35 PM, public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 9.0 by inserting a new section 9.8 establishing the Foxborough multifamily overlay district, and amend various sections to conform with the new section 9.8.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to, I know you all have heard about the MBTA Communities law, but given we have a lot of newcomers here, do you want me to run through a PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
To kind of give an overview?
It'll be fantastic. Thank you, Paige.
Sure. So just for everybody here, a new law came down the pike a couple of years ago called MBTA Communities Law. It was part of an economic development bond bill and was overwhelmingly approved in the legislature and honestly caught pretty much all of us by surprise. It applies to 175 cities and towns here in Massachusetts that are considered MBTA communities. And to clarify, one of the biggest questions I got is, well, is it because of our train station that we are considered an MBTA community? And the current commuter rail service, while it did slightly change our category, we were an MBTA community regardless. We've been a MBTA community for decades. So as you can see from this map, long before the pilot, we were in that map. But I will explain the implications of that change as I keep going. One of the things we all want to acknowledge is that this law came out, and it's a mandate from the state. We're hoping that tonight, people are upset, and we get that. We, I don't know if you've all followed Milton, but this is all, you know, we get it. And right here from our side, we're trying to do our best as sort of the government to comply with the law that we weren't asked, we were told. So tonight, we hope not to get into the merits of the law, but try to explain our rationale on why we're approaching it the way we are. And it's going to be up to the voters at town meeting as to what happens. So just to give an overview for MBTA communities, we are required as a town to adopt zoning for multifamily use as right. That means you can't require a special permit or any sort of discretionary approval. We have to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size. The minimum gross density of units is 15 units per acre, which, not gonna lie, it's very dense. Has to be no more, the bulk of it has to be no more than half a mile from a commuter rail station. And there can't be any age restrictions on the housing. You know, a lot of times, we all say, well, senior housing, or the two bedrooms, that type of thing, those are subtle ways of kind of creating age restrictions. We're not allowed to do that. And the housing has to be suitable for families with children. So that's, that's all within the law. So what does this mean for Foxborough? Foxborough is considered a commuter rail community. So that is where the commuter rail has, has affected it. When this first lock, the law first came out, we were considered an adjacent community because we didn't have permanent commuter rail service. With that, we were required to zone for 768 housing units by right. By being classified as a commuter rail community, that number has increased to 1,152 units by right. So it's based on the 2020 census, so we're looking at having to create zoning to allow 1,152 units within the town of Foxborough. The key to point out here is that we're not mandated to build these units. This is a zoning requirement, it is not a build requirement. So slight nuance, probably doesn't make anybody feel better. So what is it? It's, it's not a production mandate, that's what I was just pointing out. We don't have to create those units, we just have to zone for them. It is not related to 40B. One of the very frustrating things about being in Foxborough is that Foxborough has done a great job with 40B. We followed all the rules, and in fact, with Walnut Street, once that built, and if Moore Street was built, we would be at over 14% when only 10% is required. That doesn't help us, unfortunately, in this mandate. The law does not supersede the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, nor does it supersede Title V or the Massive Environmental Code. So there will still have to be compliance with all those requirements. And there is no provision for waiver. There's no way out. They don't care that Foxborough's done a great job and that we, you know, many towns around us, I was with someone yesterday who has 4% of their affordable housing. We have 14. Doesn't matter, it's a one-size-fits-all. We, we echo the frustration. And if you've seen any of the planning board meetings, they've had those very conversations. So in the law, it makes clear that towns that do not comply with the requirements will be ineligible for many state funding programs. The Attorney General doubled down and said that she would be looking at civil enforcement, and that we cannot avoid the obligations under the law just by saying, that's fine, we don't need any state funding, we're good. Obviously, none of us know how this is really gonna play out. I mean, Milton is going first, but I know, I was just with the Milton Town Manager yesterday, and the squeeze is on for them. I think the state is kind of gonna use Milton as an example, because they don't want to lose this whole thing right now, when all the towns are going this May or this spring to their town meetings. We've also been told that we run the risk of being sued under the federal fair housing laws. Again, we don't know. We've spent plenty of time with town council, no one knows exactly what's gonna play out. So what we're doing from this side of the table is following the steps required, and it goes to town meeting. meeting. Here's the, this week's notice, you know, the Milton voters reject the new housing plan. Healy administration has already revoked the grants. And then the Attorney General has already threatened legal action. So by December 31 of this year, we have to submit the zoning district and we have to comply with the requirement. We've held numerous discussions and meetings on this, including joint meetings with the select board, and came up with a strategy that we'll get into detail right now. Tonight is the required public hearing on the zoning. And if any of you, so just to sort of clear the air, because I know there's been some misinformation out there. The proposal you're seeing tonight has nothing to do with the Kraft Group. In fact, they asked us to be at the table with us to work on the zoning, and we said no, because we knew how it would go. We chose a location in town that we felt had the least impact on neighborhoods and had the most likely chance of being approved. It is not Ashcroft and that neighborhood. It is not on North Street. It's not the terminals. They did ask, and the board, if you watch the January 17 meeting, you'll see that the board said no. And we're proceeding with the district we're proposing. So the district we're proposing is up, I tried to look today to try to get a better way of describing it. I think it's in the general vicinity of the P-10 parking lots. It's on that side of Route 1, up against the Walpole line. And it, most of it is within a half-mile radius. On this map, you'll see the circle showing the half-mile radius. So that is the entire district. We did look at putting districts, splitting up districts and having districts in other areas of the town. And after sort of doing some very informal canvassing of various residents, it was kind of like, let's just have it in one place, because if we start getting tricky and overlay it over an existing multifamily, you just don't know what could happen. And so we felt this would have the best chance. Barney's gonna go in a little bit more into detail into the zoning bylaw, but here are the highlights. What we did is we took our existing bylaw and tried to not get too elaborate. We tried to work within our existing bylaw and tweak the zoning to allow, it's just in that district, which would be basically, you'd need 32,250 square feet for the first dwelling units and an additional 1,750 for the others. And again, Barney will get into that. And that's my overview of MBTA communities. Barney, if you want to go ahead and go over the zoning.
Yes, actually, I'm not going to do this section by section, but I will highlight a few of the sections that are here. And obviously, there's specific questions relative to the proposal. I'll be happy to answer that. When we started working on this back in September, we had three objectives. The first objective was to comply with the statutory requirement of a district of no less than 50 acres that allows 15 multifamily dwelling units by right per acre. And our draft bylaw establishes a 50-acre overlay district that's a half a mile from the Foxborough commuter rail station and that allows multifamily dwellings of 15 dwelling units in that district by right. And the map, well, actually, Gary, can you move the map? Or can you put it up on the screen again?
Put it back on the screen.
But the map that will be up in a second, that demonstrates where this district is, and that map itself will be incorporated as part of the bylaw. This is the only area in Foxborough that will allow multifamily housing by right. So again, it complies with the bylaw, but with the statutory requirement, but does not extend beyond that point. The compliance guidelines that have been developed by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities require that we zone for a district that will allow 1,000, in our case, 1,152 dwelling units by right. The draft complies with that requirement. Also, the affordability requirements that are set forth in section 9.8.9 of the draft bylaw comply with what is permitted in this respect by the compliance guidelines. Analysis of our draft by the consultant with whom we worked indicates that the draft complies with the statute and with the compliance guidelines. In addition, our draft has been reviewed by the Attorney General's office. And with only one issue expressed, it passes muster with them. And I'll get to that, you know, shortly. Our second objective was to be as consistent as possible with the current zoning bylaw. So the dimensional requirements that are set forth in table 9-3 of the draft bylaw are similar to the dimensional requirements for multifamily housing that our bylaw currently provides. Now, I know that what has, we've been criticized, our draft has been criticized as only allowing quote-unquote garden apartments. But I think the better way to look at it is that what it would allow is multifamily housing in Foxborough on a scale, size, and character as the multifamily developments that currently exist in town. As set forth in sections 9.8.8 and 9.8.10 of the draft bylaw, multifamily developments in the overlay district would be subject to the performance standards that are set forth in the zoning bylaw in section 6.5 and the site plan review by the planning board in accordance with the provisions of section 10.5 of the zoning bylaw. And though the maximum number of parking spaces required under the draft is less than that which the bylaw currently requires, the parking provisions that are set forth in section 9.8.7 are generally similar to those that the zoning bylaw otherwise imposes. And this is particularly the case with respect to the provisions that concern shared parking facilities. Our third objective was to minimize the impact to existing residential areas. The draft bylaw restricts the overlay district, as Paige indicated and as indicated on the screen, to the west side of Route 1, where it's not adjacent to or proximate to any existing Foxborough single-family residential neighborhood. And significantly, though, there is develop a land on the east side of Route 1, the Foxborough terminals area, the Ashcroft Road area, we consciously and explicitly have not included that, those areas within the draft. By the same token, though the compliance guidelines permit the establishment of multiple districts in which multifamily housing is permitted by right, our draft, as I said before, limits the district in which multifamily housing will be provided by right only to the area that's shown on this map. As a consequence, we have avoided any adverse impact on any other residential area within town. Now, I indicated that a revision is required to the current draft. That revision would be in section 9.8.10 of the draft. And what I'm proposing, and I'll indicate the reason why in a second, but what I'm proposing is that we delete the first sentence of section 9.8.10 and that we replace it with the following. All multifamily developments in the FMOD shall be subject to site plan review by the planning board in accordance with the provisions of section 10.5 of these bylaws, provided, however, that in no event shall an environmental impact statement pursuant to section 10.6 of these bylaws be required for any such development.
Barney, I threw it up on the screen.
Okay. So this revision is required to address an issue that was expressed by the Attorney General's office concerning our draft. The zoning bylaw currently authorizes the planning board to require an environmental impact statement in connection with site plan review. And this implies a discretionary review of multifamily projects, which is prohibited by the statute. And moreover, because an environmental impact statement, they serve as the basis for disapproval, requiring such a statement would be contrary, could be reviewed as being contrary to the statutory requirement that multifamily developments are allowed by right. So I would, again, request an amendment to the current draft to delete that one sentence and replace it with the one that I indicated.
Okay. Barney, I know you touched on this two or three times in your presentation, but just as a point of clarification, if we could go back to that map one last time?
Sure.
Okay. By creating this overlay district as proposed with the purple hash marks, that gives us enough acreage and ability to fulfill the entire need, so there would not be any need for any other location?
That area is 50.3 acres.
Okay.
So that would comply with the statutory.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Right. Complies with the statutory requirement. And again, it's based upon a model that the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities has developed. Our consultant has determined that we comply with the requirements.
Right.
That we would actually allow, what we are actually allowing by zoning, and again, this is not a requirement that multifamily developments, you know, be constructed. But what we are actually allowing by zoning complies with the requirements that are imposed upon us.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we did, the consultant that we used was paid for by the state through mass housing. So it, again, it's their model, their compliance model, their consultant. So we have every reason to believe we work with what they provided us.
And as I indicated, the only concern that the AG's office expressed had to do with the environmental impact statement.
Well, can we go back to that for a minute? Because I think I'm missing something or I'm confused. I thought you would explain that this would not, this legislation, this program would not supersede the environmental act.
Oh, that wetland.
Right. That's the state wetland act. This is our own local environmental impact requirement in our zoning bylaw, our local bylaw. We can't have a local bylaw that supersedes their state law. Makes sense.
Okay.
So if I can make a couple of other comments, actually, did you make the amendment already?
No.
Okay. Because I want to make just a couple of other comments before I finish.
You're doing a wonderful job so far, so keep it up.
So again, the draft also, as indicated in the hearing notice, includes revisions to a number of current zoning bylaw provisions. And those revisions are necessary to bring those particular sections into conformance with this proposal. You know, but for the provisions of a state statute, we wouldn't be discussing this article tonight, and nor would your board have conducted several meetings over the course of the past several months, and nor would Paige, Gabby, and I have been working on this matter since mid-September. Actually, in Paige's case, it probably, and in Gabby's case, it probably also preceded that. The statute mandates that we act in the manner that's proposed. And though the recent actions in Milton creates some legal uncertainty, the mandate remains. And because we're dealing with zoning changes, town meeting has the ultimate authority to act in this area. At the very least, a good faith effort to comply with the statutory requirement is necessary. And in that respect, moving the article forward so that town meeting can give it its consideration would demonstrate a good faith effort on the part of the planning board. As stated earlier, what we're addressing is a change to our zoning bylaw that complies with the statutory mandate. So we're not considering a specific project, nor are we requiring the construction of 1,152 multifamily dwelling units along Route 1. Whether, when, and how many are to be developed is an open question. And it's one that ultimately will be determined by a host of factors. And those will include economic issues and the desires and decisions of property owners and developers. That's not a decision for this board to make. And it's not a decision ultimately for town meeting to make. The decision that town meeting needs to make is whether to approve the proposed draft.
Done. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Before we open this up to the floor for any questions, I would like to reiterate what Ms. Duncan said before, that this does not affect any other area than the area in purple. And we really don't want to spend too much time this evening discussing areas that are not gonna be affected, because we have been doing our homework and trying to protect everybody's investments in this community. None of us are in love with what we're getting handed to us by the state. Please understand that.
Again, if I can just add, it's from a board standpoint, it's balancing the, I think we're all fundamentally just disgusted with you all that this has been imposed on us by the state. And, but we also have a duty to make sure that we don't put our town in jeopardy by blatantly dismissing this and not addressing it. So please know that we have spent hours and meetings discussing this. And it's been very tough. And we understand how you feel because we're right there with you.
Okay. That being said, do we have any questions from the floor?
You need to come up to the microphone.
Please come to the mic.
Here?
Yep. Come up to the mic. Give your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, just before he goes up, I have a kind question for the town manager.
Steve, you'd have to come up as well.
Just, if I can just ask, I know people are gonna start coming up. We are gonna have to limit the time if people get lengthy. And we ask that you please don't repeat something that somebody has already said. Thank you.
I'm Richard Meyer, 11 Hartwell Drive. Been in the town for about 100 years. And a lot of changes have taken place. But my main question is right now, are we being assessed by the MBTA?
What do you mean by assessed?
Are we sending money to the MBTA because we have a station here? How much are we sending?
Nothing has changed with the MBTA.
Not yet. When they incorporated that thing, they said, we don't, I don't know. Maybe they had stated that we will have 100 riders per day, 200 riders per day. I've been taking a little bit of a tally. There's about 45 cars average every day. Now, 45, I would say, one person per car. If we are being assessed for stuff like this, it's getting a little bit out of hand.
We are not being assessed.
I'm sorry?
We are not being assessed. We're not paying for the train station.
Not yet. Okay. Today, they had eight double cars, and on top of another, sitting down there. And here's 45 cars. The whole thing is a sham to me. That's my point of view. We had trains come in for the games. It wasn't under the MBTA. And people have to go to Franklin to go into Boston. Doesn't make sense. And I think people have given up of that. Then they said in our warrant, the town warrant of '21, that it was down 28% from what it usually is for the people or the public to ride. There's plenty of parking spaces, but no one's using it. I just can't see why we have to be considered part of the community in that respect.
We totally understand.
You know, it's just...
We had the discussion, but the fact remains that we are, we are named as an MBTA community, and we can't, we have to abide by the laws.
You know, from what, they're forcing us to have lots available for housing? Come on. If I'm misunderstanding this stuff...
Can we cut, just so there's no further misunderstandings here. The fact, whether or not there's an assessment for our current MBTA station is kind of irrelevant to this matter on the table right now. We would be subject to this legislation and this program whether or not the Foxborough station was opened by virtue of our proximity to Walpole and to Mansfield and to Sharon.
Right. You've got all kinds of stations, and this one is... Right, you've got all kinds of stations, and this one is just.
Yes, but.
No, like I said earlier, we've been in this town since 19, what, 68? It's grown. We had a, we live right behind the terminals. It was a postage stamp when we first went there. And there were laws, there were rules, but they didn't abide by them. All night long, trucks coming and going. Finally, we had a little meeting, and we straightened it out. We had people coming and going all the time, trucks.
So we're limiting folks to three minutes?
I'm sorry?
We only can do three minutes.
Okay, well anyhow.
So if you could wrap us up.
I just wanted to say that we did have good relationship with the warehouse people. Then all of a sudden, the big man came in and offered his warehousing to feed the veterans during the COVID situation. We had trailers, tractor trailers out there, running 24/7.
Sir, I don't mean to cut you off, but is the time, and it has nothing to do with what we're going to vote on tonight.
This is what we don't need around here. We have enough noise.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Understood.
Think of that, thank you.
Okay, once again, I will ask that any questions brought forward at this point be directly related to the zoning article as presented. Mr. Uden, yes, to the mic, yep.
Yes, you have to.
And I'm sorry about the interruption earlier.
That's okay.
It's okay, come up to the mic.
Come on up, tell us who you are and what you got.
Then people that have run me out of town won't say no my name.
John Smith.
This is not hostile, this is a.
And as long as it's pertinent to the zoning article.
It is entirely, entirely.
State your name and address.
My name is Steve Uden, I live at 21 Carmine Avenue here in Foxborough, and I am a blow-in, I've only been here 23 years. But raised two kids. First of all, to the town manager, thank you. That presentation you gave was excellent, because shame on me, I'm that guy who's walking in pretty blind to this whole thing, but irked about it, so thanks a lot. My suggestion, hope, and prayer is to our planning board is that for the betterment of the town meeting, we have a few more information sessions on that, and I know that's going to make some people roll their eyes, but with the 31 more town meeting coming up, we're going to have to bring food and water and change of clothes to get through that, Nate, I'll tell you. So I think the more we inform people, including and especially myself, it would be my suggestion that we have more information meetings, and I thank you for listening to that request. So we're held against the wall by a law that shame on me again, I didn't know what's going on a few years ago and making this happen to a bunch of communities, but here we are, and we kind of have to do it. After we do it, question, do we take our hand off the rudder on that whole area, or does the state control what we can and can't do in that whole area at this time? In other words, are we going to need, respected members, ladies and gentlemen of the board, are we going to need more public safety? Are we going to need more H2O sewer? Are we going to have to bump up the schools, right? Are we going to need more supermarkets or pharmacies? And I know they're all across the street and all that, and also consideration for, like, decibel ratings for the noise that our residents already have in place, but now we're going to possibly have 1,000 more people. Am I three minutes yet?
Close.
Will multiple builders be able to build on the site, or do we have to build all at once? That's my question. Thank you very much, God bless Foxborough.
That's actually a good question, very good question.
Very good question.
Paige, would you like to field that one?
Sure. So it's all going to be, it's up to the market in the sense of whoever owns the property, you know, they're going to make the decisions on whether it's multiple builders, whether it's all at once, and all the phasing, so that has to do with the landowner. To point out, you know, that is a, if you watched, and again, I recommend folks go back and watch the January 17th planning board meeting, it's on YouTube, if you, I always go to Google, search FC, Foxborough Cable Access YouTube Planning Board, and you'll find it, or Select Board, whatever you're looking for, but, you know, the Kraft Group was very concerned about this location, because this is in the economic development overlay area, it's a very high-value commercial property, so that's part of that balancing act that they're going to have to address is, you know, is it more valuable as a housing, or is it more valuable as parking and/or future development? So that is all going to be up to the private market, unfortunately, we do not control that. You are not wrong about, I do not know what's going to happen. I assume the state is going to leave us, I mean, you know, if we need more firefighters, we need more whatever, I don't, we have not heard of any commensurate funding that's going to be coming down the pike, and we know there's going to be 100, oh, I'm out of time, sorry. We know there's going to be 175 other communities in the same boat as us. So this is all TBD, but absolutely, it's something I've mentioned that I worry about. You know, this, we have 95 on one side of the town, and we have now possibly this many housing units on the other town, and we have a fire station, you know, a stressed fire station in the middle. So no amount of grant funding or whatnot is going to offset the costs of a substation and the staff that would go along with it. That said, the state has made clear that's not their only stick, so we don't know what's going to happen, you know, with AGs and fair housing and whatnot, and I think, you know, it will be an interesting, but I do not have those answers. I assume there's no one waiting to write us a check, but perhaps there could be some incentives down the road. I'm not holding my breath.
Thank you. And to touch on what you just said, Paige, again, this is to be compliant with the zoning article and not to be developed at this point in time. There is no discussion whatsoever on any table that I know of as far as development of this property. And this property is privately owned by the Kraft Group, and as Paige said, they really do not want to do that there. Okay? Anyone else with questions? This gentleman first, and then you're up next, Bill.
Ted Parkman from 4 Messenger Avenue. This is a technical question, like, I spent a little bit of time reading through the statute, and because of the fact that it was passed when Foxborough was an adjacent community, and now we're a commuter rail community, it didn't have any information on the developable acres, so what are the developable acres within the transit station area, within that five-mile radius?
What other areas could we put the district?
No, that's, it's a technical, I don't know if I have that right here, but we did get reclassified, and they did send us a letter, I would have to, I might have it in my stack.
We did have a note in there about what the adjacent community was, I believe.
Did we?
We still had, it was probably 60 or 70% of what the news.
Yeah, because then that dictates the percentage of the multifamily district that has to be within that area.
Right.
So that's where I was curious, is if at some point, this didn't fly or whatever, you know, what would be, what portion of that multifamily would be required to be in that?
It's 40% in this area, 40% in this area, so you could do, right, Gabby, wasn't that 40% in this area? We could do 60% in other parts of town. And for much of the conversation, we were thinking of doing that, of splitting it up and trying to be creative, and for example, putting a portion of the zoning over, say, the lodge and over the Sylvan on Fisher Street, figuring, well, those are already highly, you know, multifamily, no one's going to tear those down and rebuild, so it kind of felt like, but then, when we tried to, when I said we did this unscientific, ran it by a few people, and they all kind of felt we were being a little too, not outside the town, in the town, residents were concerned that it was kind of bringing it into town, into the fabric of the neighborhoods, and that it would make it more challenging and maybe more risky, so that's why, but it is, ultimately, it was 40%. We could get away with only doing 40% up there.
Okay, no, thank you, that's all I was, and I think, you know, I mean, for my money, given the fact that it's by right, I think this is a great solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
My name is Bill Mottum, 21 Metairie Road. The gentleman that just spoke, he kind of clarified a couple things, so it can be split up.
Yes.
Just, nobody, I came up here because I thought, I heard the word on the street that it was going to be in the Ashcroft area, and that's why me and all my neighbors are here.
And just in fairness, there was discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Just to let me clarify that, not by us, that was one of the areas that the Kraft Group proposed, and we did not.
Just a simple thought that I had was, now, we don't want it in our backyard, right, so, you know, being a good neighbor with Walpole, right, is it going to be backlash with Walpole pushing it in their backyard, and now we have to come back to the drawing board and find a new spot and split it? And then also, it said for families with children.
Yes.
Yep.
Would family and children want to have their kids play on Route 1?
Yep.
So is that another thing to, that's all.
Honestly, no, I think they're good points. First, I mean, our duty is to the town of Foxborough and its residents, believe you me, we're not trying to, you know, mess up with Walpole, but they can't do anything. They can't come and say, you can't do this, it is Foxborough land, and regarding, you know, kids being able to play on Route 1, we've cringed multiple times.
Yeah, right, so if this doesn't, you know, if this is Plan A, you know, there's Plan B and C, that's, we all might be back here again.
Well, I think, I think the idea for that is if Plan A doesn't fly, and, you know, there's already precedent for that happening, then, you know, we'll see.
Back to the drawing boards.
We'll see, I mean, honestly, my own sense is that of the communities affected by this across the state, I thought it was 177, is that right?
It's around 180.
177. This, Milton is not going to be the only one that turns this down, and there's going to be some maneuvering that happens after the fact, let it sort all out.
Couple thoughts that I had, I figured I came this far, so.
Well, it's funny, because we kind of assumed, like, well, we'll give it a shot and see how it goes, and then when we were in a webinar a while ago, you know, the state was like, well, we don't, we know it won't pass the first time at town meeting for many communities, and we'll expect you to do it a second and third time, and Gabby and I just rolled our eyes, because we were like, we were like, we'll give it a shot, one, you know, one and done, we tried, see ya, but no, they expect us to go back numerous times, but again, to Jeff's point, we haven't seen the waves so far, Milton's the only one who said no.
I actually thought there was two other smaller communities, I'm pretty sure.
Well, Holden is suing or something, but like, all the rapid transit communities have passed their bylaws except Milton, there were 12 communities required by the end of last year to do it, and 12 passed them, and then Milton, as you know, recalled, so we haven't seen yet, you know, it's been surprising, there's been a few other communities that have voluntarily passed it, and we're saying, really? We've been waiting for this backlash, so we think this spring we'll see communities more than Milton saying no, but then again, we don't know that, I mean, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't want to be at the front of that pack, I don't think. Maybe in the middle of it.
Okay, do we have anybody? Come to the mic, please, name and address.
Good evening. Neil Kaiser of Levin Ridge Road here in Foxborough. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. The only question I have, and I heard it earlier when one of the gentlemen was talking, was about sewer-ing, and I don't know if that was brought up in any of the discussions from the state, whether they ever told you that they needed sewer-ing or septic. In this area you're talking about, I do know that there's a lot of water in that area, and there is drainage, and it used to be all wooded land, and now it's all wide open and impervious due to the pavements and everything else with the different systems that have been built around it. This is just another one that would be a lot of impervious area, yet they would require septic, I'm assuming septic, because there is no sewer for them there that I know of.
Well, the Kraft Group has their own wastewater treatment plant.
I'm sorry?
The Kraft Group has their own wastewater treatment plant.
I know they do, but my question would be, is there a thing in the process here where the state says it needs to have sewer, and if so, where do they connect it? In other words, to the stadium system, or does the town have to build a system to go up to them?
It does not mention, it does not require it, but it does require compliance with Title 5, so if they could do it with septic, I'm sure they would, given the density, I believe they'll need some sort of wastewater treatment, it would most likely require another plant that the town would not be on the hook for developing. We are not required to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Christine Delaney, 18 Fox Hill Road. Nice to meet you. Quick question, you keep saying the Kraft Group is not involved. They're not, but it's been said three times in like the last five minutes, no, I just, I just, my question, who owns this?
Kraft.
The Kraft Group.
So the Kraft Group's involved, right?
No, 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 let me, the Kraft Group, there was, there was something, there was news incorrectly going around town, that we were in cahoots with the Krafts to, like, put it in a certain place that was beneficial to them and maybe not beneficial to the town.
Okay.
So that, they came to us, and if you saw what they proposed, you would have cringed, it was a budding, like, a couple different residential areas, and we shot them down cold. It is Kraft property, but Kraft had no part of determining where this parcel is.
Okay, but what if Kraft says no?
Kraft can't say no.
But he owns it.
Doesn't matter.
Well, then he doesn't build it, then he doesn't build it.
This is merely a zoning.
Then he doesn't build it, and then where does it go?
It just sits there.
We don't know, we don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so we don't know, so you would have to find a new area.
We, no, we need to create a district that qualifies.
Okay.
That is what we have proposed there.
Yep.
It is an overlay in the multiple overlay district of the entire stadium and Route 1 development.
Okay.
It is owned by the Krafts, that is not what they want there, by any way, shape, or form.
But they can't, they can't say no, this is a zoning.
And they're not going to be mandated to build it from what I can understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So once we comply, we're all set?
We're done.
Well, we'll find out.
Well, right, until they change the rules, but the problem is, is like, we, the Kraft, we don't have to prove that it needs to, we don't have to, they're not telling us we have to build it.
They're just saying we have to zone for it.
The town's going to zone it, and then, you know, I mean, I've heard of other communities that are like, oh, we're going to pass it, we don't care, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, no, we could pass it all day long, but no one could possibly build it here. So there's no requirement right now, and I agree, that, you know, but.
Right now.
This zone will pass the muster, and the Krafts are not required to build it.
Okay, so if they said no, then what's the next step?
It doesn't matter, all, what a zone is, is it allows multifamily dwellings by right, they don't have to come to us.
Okay.
But it does not require anything to be built. We could pass this at town meeting, and it would be zoned that way, nothing may ever be built in our lifetime, and that's okay. Kraft owns it, they decide what happens to it, and let me tell you, it's a heck of a lot more advantageous for them as a parking lot than it is for multifamily units.
So you're basically saying there's a good chance that the state doesn't get what they want?
No, 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 all the state wants is us to zone for it.
For zone, exactly, but in the end, they may not get the apartments that they want.
But that's not part of the requirement, we just have to zone for it.
Big risk, but.
It is a big risk.
It is a big risk.
Yeah, just so we understand, because again, it's.
There's risks on both sides, there's risks.
Well, it's even bigger, I mean, and I know you guys can't talk about that right now, the impact on the town, so it's about zoning, so, okay.
No, but there are big risks, and I got to tell you, I mean, this is probably, I've been on the board six years now, and besides the warehouse on Route 1, this has been one of the, although that one we were pretty much adamantly opposed to. This one's tough, because if we, you know, it's on the town warrant, do we vote to support it, and cross our, you know, cross our fingers that it satisfies the state, and, you know, the what-ifs don't turn out to be bad what-ifs? If we vote and say, yep, nope, we're not going to support it, it's still on the town warrant. Ultimately, regardless of how we vote, you guys make the decision, not us. Now, if you don't show up at town meeting on May 13th, you don't vote, so I just want to call that out, but, but we could also, you know, if it gets shot down. But, but we could also, you know, if it gets shot down, you know, their, their, you know, attorney, you know, lawsuits.
We know.
Lose funds.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's like, we're darned if we do, and darned if we don't.
But they also could come back, the state, if they have enough towns, that said, "We're not doing this, this is crazy, the impact's going to be too huge." You get a large group of towns, because right now I've heard quite a few, that are getting those no's, and they're counting on it, I'm just hypothetical, okay?
Only one right now has.
But you get a big group of towns, maybe the state has to go back and revamp this, and say, "Instead of 1,100 apartments, we'll bring it down to 500."
That's an, I totally agree, but that's another what-if.
Personally, I think it's better to roll the dice. You know what? What's, you know, you wait one more year, see what happens, don't be the first ones to say, "We'll take it."
Keep in mind, we don't, this is not our decision.
I know, I know it's not you guys, but I guess, I guess what I'm just trying to tell people, we don't.
We totally get it.
We don't have to jump on it the first time it comes up. Kind of hold back, think about it, see how many towns vote it down, then bring it back again, and a bigger group going back to the state might have a bigger impact, lower the numbers, and make things a little bit friendlier to the towns when they have to fund all the changes that are going to come down the road, which is the schools, your services, your police, your fire, everything, it's going to fall on us.
And what I.
So, again, that's, I'm just saying, and I know it's not you guys, you guys are doing the best.
You have to speak to the board.
And I apologize.
No, you're fine, I just want to.
I'm not like my husband, like, I don't know, you know, which direction.
No, 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 you're total, no, you're doing great.
But what I'm just trying to do is, I really appreciate.
Okay, can I speak?
Your information.
Please show up to town meeting.
Yeah.
Please. I know it's a Monday night, and the other thing is, get in touch with your senators and representatives.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
Thank you.
But thank you, no, thank you for explaining it, pleasure finally.
I know, it's nice meeting you. We're going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Just for purposes of clarification here, so everybody understands, the only action that this board is going to take tonight is to make a recommendation on the article for the warrant and the presentation at town meeting. We've already secured a place, two weeks ago, we voted to place it on the town meeting warrant, so that's all, there's no approvals by this board or anything like that, strictly in advisory capacity.
Why don't we entertain a motion?
We are, we're talking.
We're trying to determine what motion it's going to be.
Go with one we discussed.
Marko?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
Or do you, I kind of, you don't want to vote?
No, he does.
No.
Well, we need to vote.
I'm going to vote one way or the other.
This way? Do you want me to do this?
I would say, if you're going to, if the board was going to consider recommending it, my hunt, based on knowing, working with you for eight years, my idea would be that you would be recommending it with the caveat that you just want it brought to the voters. I mean, you've made clear that this is.
Well, we've already done that.
Yeah, I know, but, I mean, there's only a handful of people here compared to the hopefully, how many.
Yeah, because we voted to put it on the warrant, we have not recommended it beyond that. So, I'm going to make a motion, and this is tough as all heck, I make a motion that we support this article at town meeting with the caveat that we want, and we want, and it will be the decision of the town residents as to what happens on May 13th.
Is that good with everybody?
Is that good?
Well, we have to vote.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, no, 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 no.
Hold on one second.
For purposes of discussion, I actually don't agree with that wording.
What would you recommend?
I would just say that the board makes no recommendation on this article at town meeting.
The difference, it is no difference.
Well, there is, because we have the word "support" in there.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, would you like to?
And I personally don't support it, so.
Okay.
But we have a, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Okay, so, but let's just, so from a strategic point of view, considering that, trying to position the town.
Can I, can I read what I've written and see?
Yeah, yeah, because like, it doesn't have, you don't have to vote for it.
Here's what, here's kind of what I wrote out when I was thinking about this this afternoon. "I'd like to make a motion for the planning board to neither endorse nor oppose the warrant article, instead allow the people who will be most impacted, the residents of Foxborough, to determine what is in the best interest of the town at the annual meeting on Monday, May 13th."
You like that, Jeff? Well, I can go along with that. What I would say is that between now and town meeting, there are going to be continued discussions, there are going to be continued developments, if not here, then in other communities, and at that time, you know, it may be advisable that we may want to stick with that, we may want to modify it, or at all, so I think for now.
I agree with that.
I think for now, that probably would be sufficient.
So, I'll remove my second, withdraw, remove your motion.
If I could make a comment, my recollection is that the zoning act requires only that you report to town meeting? I'm not sure that it requires that you say whether you're in favor or opposed.
Well, it has been.
I don't know what tradition is.
It has been customary.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't know what the tradition is, but.
Well, and it doesn't even, it's not even mandated, as long as the hearing is more than 21 days from the date of town meeting, the town meeting could proceed even without a report, so. But like Jeff's point, it's always been the planning board's custom to.
I see, I'll remove your motion, draw your motion, and then you can.
Oh, I need to withdraw my first motion and make a second motion, that I'd like to, make a motion, the planning board to neither endorse nor oppose this warrant article, instead allow the people who will be most impacted, the residents of Foxborough, to determine what is in the best interest of the town at the annual town meeting on Monday, May 13th.
I'll second that.
We're in the middle of a vote?
We're in the middle of a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The public hearing is closed.
All in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
You'll provide us with that language?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Because the rest of the Foxborough care, though, they're not here, you know?
Okay.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, we can't discuss it anymore.
I wouldn't care if I lived in another area.
Now, it's going to affect the entire community, so everybody got to show up and vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was going to go absolutely.
Thank you.
I need to take a little quick, little.
Absolutely. Quick reset here.
Some fancy.
Okay, being substantially after 7:40 PM, like to open public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 11.1 by adding a new definition for commuter rail station. Mr. Overt?
So, very simply, we're proposing a definition for a term that's used in the bylaw proposal we just considered, and elsewhere in the zoning bylaw.
And we don't have a definition for it today?
No, no.
No questions? Any questions?
Any questions from the public?
Questions from the floor?
No.
I make a motion to close the public hearing related to Foxborough zoning bylaw, section 11.1, regarding a new definition for commuter rail station.
Second. All in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Make a motion to recommend the warrant article regarding zoning, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amending 11.1 by adding a new definition for commuter rail to, at the town, at the town meeting.
Give us a second.
For purposes of improving clarity.
For purposes of improving clarity. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Or maybe providing it.
All who's in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Okay.
You've got one more.
Mm-hmm. Again, being substantially past 7:45 PM, public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend section 11.1 by moving the definitions of parking lot and temporary parking lot under the heading of parking, and adding a new definition for multi-level parking structure under the same heading. Mr. Overt?
So, what we're proposing is a definition for the term multi-level parking structure, which not only is used in the multifamily overlay district proposal, but also currently in the zoning bylaw, and then establishing the term parking, the general term, heading parking, parking, as a definitional heading, and moving both a new definition and the existing definitions of parking lot and temporary parking lot under that heading. And I'll give credit for the latter to, to Gabby, that was her suggestion that we do it that way.
Yeah, right now, the different definitions are alphabetically, so we want to start grouping things together, definitions together.
I contest any sense.
Thank you.
Okay, no questions?
No questions. I make a motion to close the public hearing regarding warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amending section 11.1.
Second. All who's in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Make a motion to recommend the warrant article regarding zoning, Foxborough zoning bylaw, section 11.1, so as to provide clarity.
Second. All who's in favor?
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Thank you so much.
Very well done, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Okay, Marty, thank you very much.
Thank you, see you at town meeting, right?
Yeah, see you at town meeting.
So, once again, it being slightly after 7:50 PM, public hearing definitive subdivision Ridge Road, map 35, parcel 006 and 007, proposed four-lot subdivision, Fed Cap Inc.
And I should say that, since this is a public hearing, in the spirit of full disclosure, I have a sister and brother-in-law who are immediate abutters to this, and have been advised that I can still participate in this hearing.
And you can be unbiased.
Oh, I'm very unbiased. Very unbiased.
Oh, I know, you're right.
Very unbiased.
Thanks.
Oh, color. Sure, Bill's got expensive colors.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. That's longer than that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Look at this nice shirt.
Kim, if you have an extra one, give one to that gentleman.
Yes, no problem.
Pretty color.
Thank you. Colored wine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Cameron Gray, I'm here tonight on behalf of our client to discuss the four-lot subdivision proposed off of Ridge Road. If I could share my screen, I'll put up the rendering that I just handed out so everyone at home can see.
Thank you so much.
What's next? So, the property consists of two parcels of land totaling 7.13 acres, and it's located on the northeastern side of Ridge Road, and it butts the banks of the Nippon River. The parcels are located approximately half a mile north of the intersection with Chestnut Street, and it's directly across from 46 Ridge Road, so 46 Ridge Road is located right here across the street. So, this site lies on a peninsula that is currently undeveloped and consists of a wooded area. So, when you're looking at this site from Ridge Road, it slopes up significantly, and there's about a 20-foot elevation change. So, it slopes to the center, the central portion of the property, and then from there, it slopes down in every direction, down to the Nippon River, as well as down to Ridge Road. There are wetlands on site due to the Nippon River, and these wetlands have been certified by the Foxborough Conservation Commission. This property is located within the R40 zoning district, as well as the Wetland Resource Protection Overlay District. So, we are proposing to construct 389 feet of new roadway off of Ridge Road to service those four new lots. The roadway will consist of a standard 50-foot wide layout, which will contain a 20-foot wide roadway with slope grinning curbing, and a 5-foot sidewalk located to the south. So, I can zoom in a little bit. So, it's located right here, it's not in black, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But, so wheelchair ramps will be constructed at the beginning and the end of the roadway. The end of the roadway will consist of a paved cul-de-sac with a radius of 50 feet, and that will be within a layout that has a radius of 63 feet. So, the homes will be serviced by municipal water, provided by a proposed 8-inch water main off of the existing 8-inch water main in Ridge Road. Each home will be serviced by an onsite septic system, and we've already conducted soil evaluations throughout the site to confirm that all lots are suitable for onsite septic system. The cable, electric, and telephone utilities will be located underground in accordance with the local regulations. Streetlights will be installed at the intersection with Ridge Road and at the end of the roadway in the cul-de-sac, where we will be installing street trees at 50-foot intervals around the outside of the layout. So, we're requesting a waiver to allow an 8% grade of the roadway instead of the maximum 6% grade allowed in the local regulations. So, the reason for this waiver is the existing topography, as I mentioned. So, the center of the site, it goes up to a big hill essentially, so by allowing us to increase that grade to 8%, we would be cutting the cut that we have to do from 12 feet to down around 10 feet. So, and then just to help you guys visualize, an 8% grade, the Lawson Farms subdivision roadway, that's an 8% grade. So, aside from that requested waiver, the subdivision has been designed in accordance with the most recent Foxborough subdivision regulations. So, the stormwater management system will consist of a conventional catch basin and drain manhole system to capture the runoff from the new roadway and direct it into two separate stormwater basins. So, if you look at the front of the roadway, I'm proposing two catch basins which feed into a drain manhole before it's conveyed to the drainage basin over here. And then, same thing out back, I have three catch basins within that cul-de-sac into a drain manhole before it's conveyed to that drainage basin out back. So, I utilize the existing topography of the site to place these drainage basins. So this basin located up front in the westley portion of the site, it's essentially a gully that I dammed. So I dammed it up... So I dammed it up to cooperate our pond there. And then our second basin located out back, it's an existing low area. So I piped it into there. So this system has been designed to capture and infiltrate all runoff from the pavement for all storms up to and including the 100-year storm. And due to the topography of the roadway, we felt that the two separate basins would be the best design for this. So due to the orientation of the home on Lot 3, the stormwater basin is actually located within the side yard. So per the local regulations, a basin may not be located in a front or side yard unless topography or soil conditions can prove that this is the best location. And seeing as this is also an existing low area, we request the board allow the basin to be located within that side yard. And also do the location of the two basins within that 100-foot buffer zone. So you can see my 100-foot buffer zone here in the blue line. So you can see they're both essentially totally within that 100-foot buffer zone. We have filed a notice of intent with the Foxborough Conservation Commission. And then we have not received any comments from the town or the towns consultant regarding this project. But with that being said, we did receive input from the fire department, as well as the water department in the preliminary stages of this design, so that just aided in our design and our final design of what you see here. I think that just about covers everything. Thank you.
Sidewalks?
Yep, so I'm proposing one sidewalk. It's on the southern side.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The basin on Lot 1, do I understand correctly, there are three catch basins feeding that down at the base of the road?
Uh, no. So it's just I have two catch basins located at the mouth of the road.
And those are the only basins that feed into that?
Yeah, so I don't... I could put up the actual site plan, but if you turn to the profile...
I can see it right here.
Okay.
The only thing I'm... You know, are we reasonably comfortable that we're not going to have water flowing across Ridge Road into Teresa and James Hines's property?
Yeah, so I tried to design it. I put them as close as I could to the end of the roadway so I can try and capture all the runoff that's going to be coming off of Ridge Road. And like I said, this basin is designed to capture up to that 100-year storm and not overflow.
And so roughly, could you show me where on the road itself headed up to the cul-de-sac? What would like be the peak before it starts to pitch back?
So I can zoom in on my plan here. So the high point is right in this area here.
Okay. So you're talking about what, about 270 feet of roadway there draining down?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Cam, is the road higher or lower than the adjacent land?
So it's lower than the adjacent land. So I mean, I tried my best, and by doing that 8% grade, it helped me out a little bit. But the central portion of the site, it's... The elevation's at 302 and 304. So the most I could get out of this, I'm at 296 at the peak of this site.
Okay. So the majority of the run would be on the road?
Yes.
Any comments? Any comments from all our departments?
I didn't really see anything in there. There's preliminary.
Yeah, I printed them out. There's just a comment from Fire Department that they need confirmation that a fire hydrant will be installed at the entrance to the subdivision. And then there was a comment from the Health Department about... Because of it being a zone 2, about the type of septic system that would be required. The... Our peer reviewers are still working on it, so we still have to wait for them, for their input. They did have a meeting with Public Safety before, when they were... You know, Cameron mentioned that, when they were designing it. So they have received some input from town departments already.
And is there plans for a fire hydrant?
So I currently show one at the end in the cul-de-sac, but...
It would have to be in the cul-de-sac, Gabby, or at the... On near Ridge?
He says at the entrance.
At the entrance? Okay, what's the length of this road, Cam, to the end of the cul-de-sac?
So it's 389 feet, I believe.
Okay.
So Cam has it at the end, and he... And they want it at the cul-de-sac?
We can talk about it. I received that this afternoon, the comment.
Public comment?
Well, I don't know if the board's done yet, so... Are there any more questions for the board at this moment?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public. Mr. Kaiser? That would be you.
It's the first time I'm looking at this, so... Good evening again. Ladies first, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Neil Kaiser, 11 Ridge Road. I live up the street from this. I'm trying to decipher the height and level of everything here, and it looks like the cul-de-sac is higher than where the houses are. So I'm assuming any drainage, any water from the street that goes down the driveways is going to go out into that 100-foot buffer zone. And I'm looking at two different drainage areas that they have built in, retention areas. They're not detaining, they're retaining. I hope. I'm trying to decipher which, but detained is just keeping it for a short time when it builds up, then it's going to flow out, which it shows areas where everything will flow out of that area, that leaching area for any water or whatever. And I'm looking at some of the levels on here, and it looks like everything is going into them from the surrounding lots, lawns, wooded areas, whatever. I do question the one part where they are outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. I don't know if it's possible that they could be brought in so that they're not outside that 100 buffer zone. And it's a shame that this land is just being destroyed the way they're doing it now. They just went in and cleared it. And to me, that's unacceptable in any area in Foxborough, to me. I know you got to have land cleared for the house and the driveways and things like that. I totally understand that. But this was a beautiful area, and now it's just an open pit for drainage. Right now, that's all I can think of. I am happy to see that the septic systems for each town, for each house, is in the front of the house. And if I look at it right, the septic system is higher than the house in level, in the height of the land. Topography, is that the word I'm looking for?
Yes.
I don't know. I've seen septic systems fail, and where they go, I wouldn't want it going towards my house, that's for sure.
Well, I'm not sure I have you thought of that, Cam. Are you thinking these would be pump systems or just dug deeper?
So I don't think we'll be... We'll have to do pump systems here. And in our preliminary investigation out there, it's all beautiful soils. So obviously, all these systems will be designed in conformance with Title 5.
So Neil, that would be still gravity flow. They'd just be deeper in the ground?
The usual, yeah. I had a thought. Is this road going to be presented to the town to accept as a public road? Or is this going to be privately owned, and they will take care of it, the residents or the builder?
So we would be trying to get this road accepted, that's what I think.
They are... They are... They are proposing to build it within the parameters of the subdivision regulations so that the town could consider to accept it as a public way.
Okay, but are they proposing to do that? I mean, is it...
Yes, they are.
Okay, because I was told differently.
Well, we did have internal discussions with them, and they were looking at doing it as a private way.
And they've changed it?
No, they have changed it and present... They're presenting now doing it as an accepted road.
No, that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good question.
I don't know what else to talk to or I'd like to go now, but maybe...
No, you're good.
Maybe when they have any other hearings or whatever, more neighbors will come. Especially the ones that are next door.
Well, you're doing a good job, Earl.
I know one of them is on a jaunt with in-laws right now, so... But thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you know when you want to continue this, too?
Oh, you want me to close it?
No, no, I'll close it yet.
Oh, continue.
Yeah. March 14th at 7:20?
7:20. I make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the definitive subdivision Ridge Road, map 35, parcels 006 and 007, proposed four-lot subdivision, FedCap Inc., to...
March 14th.
March 14th at 7:20 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Jeff, I.
Ron, I.
Tracy, I.
Gary, I.
Kevin, I. Sorry, I thought the date, but I didn't get the time.
7:20.
7:20.
7:20?
Yes.
Thank you.
For us means about 8:30.
That's what's in front of it. I think we're ready to do that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jeff, I.
Ron, I.
Tracy, I.
Gary, I.
Kevin, I.
Feel better, Kevin?
Good night, buddy.
Thank you. Thanks for doing everything.